These are carbon sinks, so they're going to die sometime during the meeting. I have the pack and rechargeables here. They do. Okay. And I saw you talk to everyone. So you should be fine.
I know you will.
Time is five eighteen. I now call the meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. And to the great cause of which this is concerned. One nation under God, indivisible, with the ever changing seasons.
I'm going to turn it off.
Are we good online?
We are.
City Clerk, will you please call, roll call, please? Thank you.
Councilman Reynosa?
Here.
Councilman Verdugo? Councilman Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Gómez?
Here.
Mayor Priscillo is absent. He happens to be out of the country at a commitment with another agency. He is trying to log in right now, so he may join us shortly. All we can do is online. Mexican consulate, they're doing a bi-national forum on sports and drug abuse in youth. I mean, was selected to represent the city and the Central Valley. City in the Central Valley of Mexico City. And I just spoke to him, he's trying to get logged in.
Okay, it appears the Mayor Priscilla- Praciado is joining us remotely. Is he on?
Not yet.
Well, while he comes remotely, I'd like to motion for the mayor to allow, be allowed to participate remotely under the Just Cause provisions of the Brown Act. Angie, can you do roll call?
Yeah.
Councilman Reynosa?
Yeah.
Councilman Verdugo?
This is just for him to participate in the meeting. He has no, he cannot think that we do today.
So if he's representing the city, if the council approves the vote for him to represent the city and participate remotely, yeah, would be able to vote.
We haven't had anybody else that be done that for anybody else, so I say no.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Gómez?
Yes.
Three one, no. Pass.
Once he's able to log on, I think probably in between public comment should be able to log on. But at this time, you'll still be presiding over the meeting. Mayor Pro Tim Gómez, so we can continue on and have the clerk read the statement.
This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the city council items of interest that are both on the agenda or not on the agenda and are within subject matter jurisdiction of the city council's successor agency. State law prohibits any member of the city council from commenting or acting on matters not of the agenda. The city council asks that you keep your comments concise and respectful. Criticism, concerns, or supports are welcome, provided they are expressed with appropriate courtesy. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. A timer will notify you when your time is expired. Please begin your comments and stating your name and place of residence. And I do have comment cards. Let me. Ginger Wallace.
Hi, my name's Ginger Wallace, and I live at ten thirty-six Whitney Street here in Avenel. Okay, so today I'm addressed to a couple of concerns. Why was the contract not sent over on Friday the twelfth, like it was discussed at the last meeting, to be sent over for the next Board of Supervisors meeting? A lie again. Requesting that the second reading of the five-part D for the, you guys' ordinance, to be read out loud and clear, so the people can hear you in the audience and online. Requesting that this meeting and other meetings from here on out, closed session, to be moved to the end of the meeting and not the middle of the meeting. It's just a tactic, so people will leave and you guys can still do what you want, when you want, and not have the community input. Requesting that ordinance twenty twenty-five-two also be read out loud and clear, so that we can hear you. Let's don't have bedtime stories this time. Why is the city manager Anthony's salary, information, and job description not public? I've looked it up on the website and on the city website, and it's not there. Why is the minutes not part of our packet for last meeting? And the minutes are not being fully what the community says. The minutes need to be put word to word on what the community says. So that is for you guys, again, non-transparency. You guys want to be transparent, put the minutes in. Forward for what the community says. And lastly, I would also like to know if you guys can show me where an in-house fire department, in six months, what fire department has did it in California or in the USA from scratch? It's never been, it takes over three years to do it. So I would like to know where you guys get your information where it could be done in six months. Thank you.
Delilah Barajas? Hold on, Delilah. Go ahead.
My minutes already started without me talking?
We started.
Okay, I guess.
Go ahead, it started.
Thank you.
I apologize, there is a bit of video game, so.
Okay. Um. On the agenda, I see you want to change summary minutes into action minutes. My concern is that without summary minutes, there will be no real transparency. We'll be left wondering how and why decisions were made and by whom. Most importantly, it will make it much harder to hold you accountable for the words you speak and the promises you make. And let's be honest, as it stands, this city does not fully trust you. To the sitting council members, I want to ask you, do you understand that this is not a wise decision? None of you will hold your council seats forever. At the end of the day, you are also free citizens of Avenel. And one day, when you no longer hold your seats as council members, you too will want transparency and accountability from those of the people that serve you. I understand that loyalties and friendships may influence you, your choices, but those ties should never outweigh your duty to the people of Avenel. You are wise, you will choose to not to change summary minutes into action minutes, because this decision will come back to affect you as well. I ask you today, take my word seriously for once. Do what the people of Avenel elected you to do. Stand with us and have our backs. Now, what's important about what I'm saying is the following. I'm looking at the minutes from last time, and there's a narrative. And I'm going to call it a narrative, because it was shortened to be what you guys wanted. I've been hearing local control, local control, local control all this time. I have a problem with local control. That to me sounds like I'm being obligated to do things that I don't want to do. My narrative is not complete. I know what I said on the last meeting, and this isn't even half. As a matter of fact, it is worded so that it is very positive for our city, which it talks about that I said something about the fire department and stuff. I can't find it right now, my goodness gracious. It says, "Avenel residents, state leaders, are not working in the best interest of the community." Once again, I'm stating the same thing. It's also discussing dates for discussion about starting a fire department and city audits. That sounds so positive. I wasn't that positive in what I was saying. I was basically wanting to know how you guys could afford to get a new fire department going without having clear audits. That's what I was talking about. So this is controlling the narrative, and that's why it's important that summary minutes compared to action minutes do not get changed. Thank you.
Because of the agenda, do I need to make a public? Or is it when the agenda, when it comes up?
No, it'll be on public time.
It is.
This is the time to address items both on and not on the agenda.
And not on the agenda.
Frank Lopez?
Good afternoon, City Council. I am Frank Lopez, six oh four Cinnamalane. Just wanted to invite everybody to the Pistachio Festival on October eighteenth. We're trying to be ahead of the game, almost a good month out to invite people to come. There's going to be lots of activities, talent show, ice cream contest. We are also thinking about doing a jail, kind of a donating jail kind of activity, where people are able to be locked up from around the community, obviously with their consent. And the money that people pay to lock them up in a cage will go to the scholarships. And so just I know with all the stuff that's been going on, there might be some people on the council who might get jailed up. So I wanted to give you guys the heads up, just so you guys know. It would be for a good cause, it's for all the scholarships Rotary does. And so just wanted to kind of invite you guys to that. And also, if you guys have any talents, I'm trying to get people for the talent show. I hear Moses sings really well, so. So I'm just trying to give people a heads up with some time. And also invite the community, the businesses, and any other local nonprofits around that want to have a booth and do any activities or share some activities. We should have smores the night before, breakfast, and some country music during the music part. And it should go all day on the eighteenth. And trying to get bands, we should have some social media up there. And I also want to thank the city for all their assistance in building that up as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Waye?
This is actually going to be a co comments with our Kings County Fire Chief. So I'd ask respectfully, I mean, add a little bit of time, because he's going to come up after my comment. But good evening, Council, Kings County Supervisor Richard Valley. I want to start off by saying that I really took a lot of time this week on Monday. I asked, I invited Mayor Praciado to come to the city of Querkerin, so him and I could sit down with the one-on-one and try to get past this. So I sat down very positively with him. I, we talked about how the Kings County Board of Supervisors has sent your council a three-year contract with an eighteen-month termination clause. I urged him to get it signed, so we could all move forward and start working together on positive things for the city of Avenel. He said that he would vote yes on a three-year contract with an eighteen-month termination clause if he could have the comfort of language added to the contract that if you guys had your fire station ready to go in a year, he didn't want to be stuck waiting for six months for a termination clause to expire. We shook hands on it, I told him I would go back to the county, and I did. So on Tuesday, Board of Supervisors, we had a discussion. The board said, you know what, we don't need to keep going back and forth. We will do the one-year termination clause, we want to get this done ASAP. I called the mayor, I told him what I thought was good news, in the spirit of good negotiations. He said, I told him that the board wanted it done ASAP. Please call your city manager, Anthony López, have him call our county CAO, Kiriya Martinez. Let's get this done, Mr. Mayor. He calls your city manager, he calls me back ten minutes, and he says, we're going to put it on the agenda, that means negotiations are open. I no longer want a one-year termination clause, I want a six-month termination clause. At that point, I told him that the immaturity and the lack of good faith negotiations, that I believed that the Board of Supervisors was not going to take this very nightly, and that he is, no longer has their patience. He said that, so then I said, have city manager Anthony López call Kiriya with better news than that. City manager Anthony López then calls our county CAO and tells her that the three-year contract is off the table. The council wants a one-year contract. Okay, so I'm here to tell you, tomorrow, the agenda is going to come out publicly for our board meeting Tuesday at nine AM. We're going to take up this issue. There's going to be four options, one, two, and three, we've been going over with you since May. The options are to go with the eighteen-month, three-year, go with the three-year with six-month termination clause, go with the three-year with the sixty days. We've been through that, you've made it very clear that you are not interested in a contract with the county of Kings and keeping our firefighters here. Option number four, and it gives me no pleasure to tell you, option number four is a full removal of Kings County firefighters from the city of Avenel effective October thirty-first. So come October thirty-first, if this community has no firefighters in it, and you can smirk all you want, Mr. López, it's going to be your fault, and it's going to be the fault of Mayor Praciado and any council member that has followed this lack of leadership down this street. It's not going to be my fault, and I'm going to tell you that come Tuesday, I'm going to be transparent with my constituents. If the Board of Supervisors motions for a full removal of firefighters October thirty-first, I'm going to vote yes with them, and I'm going to stand with them, and I'm going to stand with these firefighters that have been disrespected by the leadership in this county. You can shake your head all you want, too, I'm done playing games. It's time for someone to be an adult in the room. And that's going to be me, and that's going to be my board members. So you do what you want, you have a three-year contract with an eighteen-month termination clause. God help you if come October thirty-first, this community has no county firefighters in it. Fire chief?
Hard to follow that up. So John Chamberlain, Kings County Fire Chief, I'm unfortunately put in the position of politics that I am stuck with here. We're in a position where I don't have the spending authority to execute services any longer. I made that clear to you last meeting, when I asked you to please get it done. Mayor scolded me for tapping the podium. Specifically, remember that, but that was my point. I'm now left in a position where I literally have no option. I can't get public funds. I'm asking you, imploring you, once again, please get to the table and make it happen. In the meantime, I do have a letter here that was sent from city manager López. Basically, it says, per city council resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-eight, city Avenel has agreed to retroactively pay four fifty for fire services fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. Balance of twenty-five thousand dollars remains outstanding, has been authorized for payment. Resolution twenty-five forty-seven, the city agreed to make payments one million ninety-six thousand three hundred and ten twenty-eight for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six. And a hundred and six thousand two hundred and fifty has already been paid, and we do acknowledge that. That was the first quarter billing on the original four and a quarter. Basically, they also sent an additional check for a hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight twenty-seven fifty-seven for the quarterly payment, that would have rounded out the new amount, and an additional two hundred and seventy-four thousand seventy-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents that would have brought us up to par for January one. Since I have no contract signed, and I have no ability to accept this money, I'm going to hand this back to you. So, thank you. And I also want to thank the city for all their assistance in building that up as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Waye.
This is actually going to be a co comments with our Kings County Fire Chief. So I'd ask respectfully, we need a little bit of time because he's going to come up after my comment. But good evening, Council, Kings County Supervisor Richard Valley. I want to start off by saying that I really took a lot of time this week on Monday. I asked, I invited Mayor Preciado to come to the city of Corcoran so him and I could sit down with the one-on-one and try to get past this. So I sat down very positively with him. I, we talked about how the Kings County Board of Supervisors has sent your council a three-year contract with an 18-month termination clause. I urged him to get it signed so we could all move forward and start working together on positive things for the city of Avenal. He said that he would vote yes on a three-year contract with an 18-month termination clause if he could have the comfort of language added to the contract that if you guys had your fire station ready to go in a year, he didn't want to be stuck waiting for six months for a termination clause to expire. We shook hands on it. I told him I would go back to the county, and I did. So on Tuesday, Board of Supervisors, we had a discussion. The board said, you know what, we don't need to keep going back and forth. We will do the one-year termination clause. We want to get this done ASAP. I called the mayor. I told him what I thought was good news in the spirit of good negotiations. He said, I told him that the board wanted it done ASAP. Please call your city manager, Anthony Lopez. Have him call our county C O, Kiriya Martinez. Let's get this done, Mr. Mayor. He calls your city manager. He calls me back 10 minutes. And he says, we're going to put it on the agenda. That means negotiations are open. I no longer want a one-year termination clause. I want a six-month termination clause. At that point, I told him that the immaturity and the lack of good faith negotiations that believed that the Board of Supervisors was not going to take this very nightly and that he is, no longer has their patience. He said that, so then I said, have city manager Anthony Lopez call Kiriya with better news than that. City manager Anthony Lopez then calls our county C O and tells her that the three-year contract is off the table. The council wants a one-year contract. Okay, so I'm here to tell you, tomorrow, the agenda is going to come out publicly for our board meeting Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. We're going to take up this issue. There's going to be four options. One, two, and three, we've been going over with you since May. The options are to go with the 18-month, three-year, go with the three-year with six-month termination clause, go with the three-year with the 60 days. We've been through that. You've made it very clear that you are not interested in a contract with the county of Kings and keeping our firefighters here. Option number four, and it gives me no pleasure to tell you, option number four is a full removal of Kings County firefighters from the city of Avenal effective October 31st. So come October 31st, if this community has no firefighters in it, and you can smirk all you want, Mr. Lopez, it's going to be your fault, and it's going to be the fault of Mayor Preciado and any council member that has followed this lack of leadership down this street. It's not going to be my fault. And I'm going to tell you that come Tuesday, I'm going to be transparent with my constituents. If the Board of Supervisors motions for a full removal of firefighters October 31st, I'm going to vote yes with them, and I'm going to stand with them. And I'm going to stand with these firefighters that have been disrespected by the leadership in this county. You can shake your head all you want to. I'm done playing games. It's time for someone to be an adult in the room. And that's going to be me, and that's going to be my board members. So you do what you want. You have a three-year contract with an 18-month termination clause. God help you if come October 31st, this community has no county firefighters in it. Fire chief.
Hard to follow that up. So John Chamberlain, Kings County Fire Chief, I'm unfortunately put in the position of politics that I am stuck with here. We're in a position where I don't have the spending authority to execute services any longer. I made that clear to you last meeting when I asked you to please get it done. Mayor scolded me for tapping the podium specifically. Remember that. But that was my point. I'm now left in a position where I literally have no option. I can't get public funds. I'm asking you, imploring you once again, please get to the table and make it happen. In the meantime, I do have a letter here that was sent from city manager Lopez. Basically, it says, per City Council Resolution 202538, City Avenal has agreed to retroactively pay 450 for fire services fiscal year 2425. Balance of $25,000 remains outstanding. Has been authorized for payment. Resolution 2547, the city agreed to make payments $1,96,31028 for the fiscal year 2526, and $106,250 has already been paid. And we do acknowledge that. That was the first quarter billing on the original four and a quarter. Basically, they also sent an additional check for $167,82757 for the quarterly payment. That would have rounded out the new amount. And an additional $274,077.57 that would have brought us up to par for January 1. Since I have no contract signed and I have no ability to accept this money, I'm going to hand this back to you. So, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sheila Verdugo. Sorry.
So I'm here as of September 11th. At this September 11th meeting, a community member had asked that her concerns be fully reflected in the minutes and not minimized. That shows the importance of what it is to have our voices heard and written in the minutes. With our community already divided and many residents feeling unheard about the future of our fire services, which now we think we see, I would respectfully ask each of you to consider, why would we want to reduce the details of our minutes at a time when people are asking for more transparency? Why would you want to do that? The public relies on the minutes to understand not only the votes, but also the concerns raised. For that reason, I respectfully ask that this item be pulled from the consent calendar and that the council continue using summary minutes so that voices of our residents are reflected on that record. And before the vote on this item, I want to ask each of you, each of your councilmen, Mr. Reynoso, Mr. Verdugo, Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Gámez, if Mr. Preciado is on with the division already in our community over these fire services and with residents feeling their voices are being minimized, are you comfortable reducing transparency even further by moving the action minutes? The public deserves to know where each of you stand on this question. I realize you cannot answer, but it's just for thought before you even even vote on that consent calendar. Why would these minutes and why would this be on a consent calendar? This is important to your community, to our community, that you you give us a voice and you let that voice be seen and heard. You are silencing our voice by doing this. And by putting it on a consent calendar, it seems like it's being hidden, right, from the community? The community doesn't even know this is happening because it's on a consent calendar where you blanket a bunch of things into one motion. That is not okay. If it's okay with you, then that's on you. That's between you and God, right? We all talk about being Christians, about doing the right thing. Oh, Ms. Gámez, please don't smirk about being a Christian and doing these things, right? It's important. You have children. We have, I have children. I want to do the best for them. I want to give them the best.
Second, Sheila.
I want them to know what's right and what's wrong, and we are not teaching them that right now in this moment. And I'm sad for that, for each of you.
Luther Wallace.
Okay. Hi, my name is Luther Wallace. My concern right now is with the trucks coming out of the dump. They do not stop at the stop sign. I've been hit three, almost three times now. Yesterday, Wednesday, we called the ambulance for my son because he's having trouble breathing. As I was leaving town, when the rain was coming down pretty hard, the truck driver did not stop at the stop sign and pulled out in front of me. And the clear vision was I was not even speeding because that area right now, as it is, is you can't go through there speeding because they don't even stop at the stop sign. It's a dangerous situation right now. And I know the other day, there was already a wreck there, a car or something, what I've seen on Facebook. So I don't know how true that is. But I bring this up to the council to let you guys aware of what's going on. And another thing, I think we need to slow down and do our own fire department since you guys are going on with it and give us time so we have a right department to start when we start to take, when you guys take over our own apartment. And I'd really like to see you guys do plans and give it out to the community as best you can, what information you guys are going to do and stuff with the fire department. Thank you.
That's all the comments at this time.
Ms. Kelly, go ahead. So we have a Kelly who has her hand raised. Would you like to give your comment? You're muted. You're trying to speak.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Wow. I am in shock. I can't believe that. My name is Kelly Guzman, and I own a home on 313 Ventura Street. And I'm out of town right now because I'm at work, but I'm here. And I'm, I stand in solidarity with the others that have spoken tonight about the lack of transparency and the, I'd like to read a little something here about why I recall. And the lack of transparency, the withholding of confusing public documents, the limiting of public input, which goes to having those closed sessions in the middle of our meetings, ignoring residents' concerns, conflicts of interest. You guys are all over the place on different boards and teams and all over the place. And I would like to see more concise concerns for the city and how its safety is being affected. And the money, the money, the budget. Difficulty accessing key information that goes to what Sheila just spoke about there. We need to know what's going on, and we need not to be minimizing people's statements on the minutes or otherwise. Another thing I'd like to say is that I don't, I do not want my, to waive my right to hear what's going on with those. I guess I should specifically read the names that we're talking about here. The ordinance 2025-3, adding chapter 12 to title four. And we want them read out loud. We need to know. We need to hear. We have the right to hear. We voted for you guys to vote and speak for us, not to cut us out and not hear us and vote and speak whatever you guys come up with in your closed meetings and outside meetings that you're not sharing with the public. And also that goes forward to to the 2025-2. We want them read out loud as well. Thank you.
Rita Wallace.
Didn't the last council meeting, didn't all you guys vote to pass the contract and send it back to Kings County? I think you all did, didn't you? It didn't go to Kings County yet? Huh? Anybody got it? City manager? Anybody? No? So you guys ain't doing your job. Now you know why y'all getting recalled.
That's all the public comment cards that I have at this time? Please keep your comments to yourself, please.
Oh, I was talking to her.
Oh.
Yeah, Pro Tim, I would recommend, given that we're still trying to get the mayor to log on, we could probably move close session and move on to number five and then the presentations, activity reports. If you want to move to number five.
The consent calendar. Do you want to go to the close session first?
No, I'm recommending we move close session. Wait on close session until we get the mayor.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do the consent calendar. So all items listed under the consent calendar are routine for or for approval only and are enacted by one motion. Consider city of Avenal's accessory agency approval of minutes for September 11th. Consider ratifying approval of resolution proclaiming September 2025 for as National Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month. Wave second reading and adopt the ordinance for amending 6-4.20 and of the Avenal Municipal Court Cross Connection Control Policy Update, Resolution 202549. Wave second reading and adopt ordinance 202503, adding chapter 12 to title four of the Avenal Municipal Code establishing the fire, Avenal Fire Department and Fire Protection Regulations, Resolution 202550. The last one considered by motion transition from summary minutes to action minutes for city council meetings. Does anybody want to?
Yeah, I'd like to pull two items from the consent calendar, D and E. Move D to old business and move E to new business. Most of the week, pull those two items to those two sections.
So if you want to pull, then you pull.
Yeah, I'm going to pull. And move to present, motion to approve the A, B, and C only.
I moved to approve as presented.
He's already made a motion. We have to.
Honor his? Okay. So do you approve or do you want to? You have a second?
I'm going to pull and discuss C and D for more discussion and just approve to, to to approve A, B, and C only at this time, and C, D, and E will be discussing more in depth.
So because a council member has pulled, I'd like to pull B and E, those are going to get pulled one way or the other. So really, it's just A, B, and C left on the exam.
Okay.
His motion is basically just to move forward with consent as revised.
A, B, and C. I, I second it for A, B, and C. D and E. I want a motion for D, but and pull E.
Take a vote on it.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Reynosa?
Yes.
Councilman Verdugo?
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Gómez? What are we voting on? A, B, and C? Yes. Okay, so three and one no.
You wanted to motion on, on D?
I wanted a motion on D and not E. Pull E. We need more discussion on that one. On E?
So the proposal was to move D to new business?
Yes.
And then move E to old business or pending business. So is that?
D, because it was from last week, and so it's old business, and E is new business, so we're under new business.
Can we motion on, can we motion on old business?
Can right now. You can if you want to.
And just move it to old business rather than consent?
Yeah, it's got to, you can either do it now or move it to one of those other categories.
And motion later. Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, you would vote on it, on whether you're going to move it or not later on, once you take their house.
Okay, we can do that. So I motion to move D to old business, E to new business for more discussion? That was the motion on the table. Okay, so I'll second it. I can second it. Thank you. So marrying council member's accessory agency items for consideration, there's none. Activity reports, special presentation and committee reports. So the police department activity reports?
Good evening, honorable council members. Mayor Pro Tim, Letitia, city manager, madam clerk, and honored guest. My monthly report dated September 25th, 2025 regarding our organizational priorities, regarding leadership stability. Commander Ridge continues to provide invaluable support in many areas of the department. He oversees our field training program, ensuring that our new officers are given every opportunity to succeed while still holding them to high standards. This month, another officer successfully completed the program. Commander Ridge also assists with internal investigations and department procurement, including the recent purchase of nine vehicles from the city of Fresno that will strengthen our fleet. He's also coordinating grant-funded purchases for two new patrol vehicles and managing several other projects to improve our operations. Corporal Van Durson contributed by delivering in-house training for officers on traffic collision reports. His instruction has standardized our practices and reinforced our best methods for accurate documentation. Sergeants Gracida and Gonzalez continue to excel as first-line supervisors while also serving as field training officers, directly guiding and mentoring our new officers through the, through the transition to solo status. Our records staff also made significant strides. All members completed post-certified Public Records Act training. And records clerk Karen Salis successfully finished the post-certified records course, ensuring professional and compliant records management. Regarding recruiting and retaining the best, the department has welcomed one new officer. Well, we had two new officers with prior law enforcement experience, Officer Sergio Clamaco and Officer Paul Navarro. Both bring valuable skills and perspectives to our team and are currently in the field training program. Another officer candidate with previous law enforcement experience is in the hiring process while one lateral applicant is in the background phase and another in the interview stage. And just to update on that, we have, it's now one officer that we hired. And also we have another officer in that background process. He's no longer in the interview stage. Officer Christopher Drake successfully completed the field training program this month and is now serving as a solo officer, and we'll update our social media to reflect that here shortly. Detectives and property and evidence team continue to strengthen their partnership, enhancing the management of complex cases. Detectives also supported the Department of Justice and the Kings County Sheriff's Department or office during a recent human trafficking operation. Looking forward, one of our detectives is scheduled to attend the ICI Poor Investigators Course in October, which will expand our investigative capacity and reinforce collaboration with our regional partners regarding fostering our international model of community trust and fostering our relationship with our community. Community outreach remains a high priority. Our community service officer has been developing new pamphlets and flyers to support our upcoming E and skip grant presentations. Staff participated in several community initiatives this month, including suicide awareness walk and the CHP Senior Driving Course alongside our partners, CHP. Recruitment efforts for the Police Explorer Program are continuing with a dedicated event scheduled at the Avenal Theater on October 1st at 5:30 p.m., led by Sergeant Gracida. In addition, we are preparing to host National Night Out on October 7th, 2025 in the form of a neighborhood block party, which will further strengthen our ties with our community. Among the safest cities in America, you know, that's what we're striving for. Part one crimes continue to trend downward, which are the most violent crimes, reflecting proactive enforcement and diligent investigative work. The department is actively managing several complex cases and is making progress towards resolution of those cases. The Flock Safety Camera Systems remain 50% installed as we wait Caltrans permitting. We were advised that that was going to be a lengthy process beforehand, and that's pretty consistent in every county where we've attempted to get those permits. And we should get those approved here shortly. Although delayed, the cameras already in operation have proven highly effective in supporting investigations and identifying criminal activity. We're also moving forward with the procurement of a new case management system. We're also moving forward with the procurement of a new case management system designed to streamline reporting and administrative processes. This upgrade will allow officers to spend more time in the field and less time completing paperwork, enhancing both efficiency and community presence. Embracing wellness amongst our employees, we believe that a well an officer that is well uh that their character and their conduct will translate towards the community. And that's what we strive for. The department continues to prioritize a positive and supportive work culture. Leadership remains engaged with staff through open communication, regular check-ins, and active participation in daily operations. These efforts ensure that team members feel valued, connected, and encouraged to contribute ideas that improve our mission. We also emphasize balance by supporting staff involvement in community events, which promotes both professional engagement and personal fulfillment. Moving forward, we will continue to foster an environment where wellness, growth, and teamwork are central to our success. And as you can see, the data uh for for August has been fully inputted. We had nine hundred and three calls for service. Uh five hundred and fifteen of those were self-initiated, twenty-six citations, five traffic collisions, and twenty-six arrests. And at the time of the completion of this report, the stats for September, looks like we're gonna be consistent with previous months. Uh five hundred and twenty-one calls for service so far for September. Three hundred and seven were officer-initiated activities, uh eight citations, four traffic collisions, and nineteen arrests thus far. And I'm sure that'll increase by the end of the month. And that's my report. Any questions?
No, thank you.
There is a request um to, no more questions.
No more. Uh is there any questions for the chief? Is it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um John from Chris Com is asking if he could be moved up, since one report over, instead of two going on to number three.
Okay.
Like not the old grant writing report, be from John, uh Chris Com.
Okay, is um, so which presentation is that?
Seven three, eight three.
Okay.
You go ahead, John.
Is he on?
Yes, I'm on Zoom. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Well, good evening, honorable council members. It's my pleasure to be able to give our Chris Com uh report. So I wanna start on our legislative side. As of September twelfth, twenty twenty five, the state, California State Legislature has officially concluded its legislative activity for the year, marking the final day for passage of bills during this session. No additional legislative proposals may advance beyond this date. Governor Newsom now has until October twelfth, twenty twenty five to either sign or veto the measures that reached his desk. These bills encompass a wide range of significant policy areas, including climate change, healthcare reform, labor protections, data privacy, and immigration. The governor's forthcoming decisions will be instrumental in shaping the state's policy trajectory for twenty twenty six and beyond. On the federal side, our four million dollar federal funding request for the Avonel Water Storage Tank Project remains on track and under active consideration. We continue to work closely with Congressman David Valadeo's office to ensure that the project remains prioritized as part of the broader fiscal year twenty twenty six appropriations process. At present, there is no indication that individual community project funding requests, including ours, will be removed from the final budget package, which is good. On a broader level, Congress is currently working to avert a federal government shutdown. Last week, House Republicans introduced a continuing resolution aimed at maintaining federal funding levels uh at current levels through November twenty uh twenty first, twenty twenty five. On Friday, the House narrowly passed H R fifty-three seventy-one, the Continuing Appropriations and Extensions Act of twenty twenty six by a vote of two hundred and seventeen to two hundred and twelve. This temporary funding measure includes an additional thirty million dollars allocation for the congressional security and is designed to provide lawmakers with additional time to finalize a comprehensive full-year appropriations package. While this continuing resolution represents a step toward maintaining government operations, several uncertainties still remain. Congressional Democrats have proposed a number of amendments, including the extension of healthcare subsidy uh subsidies, and continue to call for a more robust bipartisan negotiations. As such, the potential for a government shutdown later this year cannot yet be ruled out.
No worries.
Um in response to prior uh inquiries regarding the flow of federal funds to and from California, it's important to note that the state continues to function as a donor state within the federal system. This means that California residents, businesses, and governmental entities contribute more in federal tax revenue than the state receives in federal expenditures. In federal fiscal year twenty twenty-two, California paid approximately forty-eight billion dollars more in federal taxes than it received back in the form of federal spending. This imbalance position California last among all fifty states in terms of net federal return. Although temporary federal COVID-nineteen relief funds improved this ranking in twenty twenty-three, moving California to twenty-six instead of fiftieth, um that improvement was not structural and is unlikely to persist. When one-time pandemic relief is excluded, California has been a donor state in eight of the past nine years. The gap has reached as high as a hundred and one billion dollars in a single fiscal year, underscoring the consistent nature of this imbalance. Several structural factors contribute to this phenomenon. California's compet- uh comparatively high income result in disproportionately high federal tax contributions, while the federal allocation uh formulas tend to favor states with higher poverty rates, older populations, or significant federal installations, such as military bases. As a result, despite being the largest contributor to federal revenues, California frequently receives a smaller share of federal expenditures relative to other states. As you may know, we currently uh distribute a bi-weekly Sacramento snapshot that provides updates on key state legislation. Uh Antony is already receiving this update, and he received it this afternoon. And we would be happy to include any city council members who are interested as well. So if you'd like to be on the distribution list, please let me know, and I would love to send it to you. Onto the economic development portion. During the month of September, the Chris Com Company's economic development efforts have centered on two key priorities. One, the attraction of retail businesses, and two, the advancement of industrial development opportunities. These parallel initiatives reflect a comprehensive strategy to diversify Avonel's base and foster long-term growth. On the retail front, our team is currently developing a franchise opportunity flyer intended to support outreach efforts to both national franchise uh corporations and local entrepreneurs seeking to seeking ownership opportunities. The flyer will emphasize Avonel's competitive advantages, including its untapped consumer demand, the strength of its regional trade area, and the state's commitment, excuse me, the city's commitment to supporting new business ventures. This tool will serve as a foundational element in marketing Avonel as a viable and attractive location for franchise expansion and investment. Concurrently, our team is expanding its industrial outreach to include real estate developers, site selectors, and corporate leaders in the logistics and supply chain sectors. Avonel's strategic location along major transportation corridors in the Central Valley makes it particularly well-suited for warehouse and distribution operations. Outreach efforts have begun with targeted communications designed to highlight the city's regional accessibility, labor force potential, and cost advantages. These discussions are intended to position Avonel as a competitive option for companies seeking to establish or expand logistics uh facilities in California's central region. Together, these initiatives represent a coordinated and deliberate approach to economic development by pursuing retail attraction, supporting local franchise ownership, and engaging industrial stakeholders. Our team is laying the groundwork for increased private investment, a broader tax base, and the creation of new employment opportunities. This strategy ensures that both small businesses and national enterprises have the tools and support necessary to thrive in Avonel's growing economy. Moving on to our grant writing part of the update, the Chris Com team remains actively engaged in bi-weekly staff meetings and ongoing coordination with the city's departments to identify optimal funding opportunities. Concurrently, applications are being advanced alongside critical pre-application activities, including budget alignment, a compliance review, and data collection. Uh I wanna go over the grants that are in progress and upcoming. Currently, we are working on the California Conference of Directors of Environmental Health uh reimbursement grants for local code enforcement. Let's do uh September thirtieth. Upcoming, we have the Body One Camera Policy Implementation Grant uh Program that's due on October twenty-seventh. We have the O J P Community-Based Violence Intervention Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative due on October uh twenty-seventh as well. And we have the Stop School Violence uh due on October twenty-seventh. Lastly, upcoming is the Beverage Container Recycling City-City Payment Program that's due on November eighteenth. And that concludes my report. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Of all those grants that you mentioned, how many of those are actually federally funded that we might not see at all?
That uh sorry, can you repeat that? What do you mean that you might not receive uh see it all?
The all the all the grants that you just mentioned right there at the end, how many of those are federally funded?
I believe uh four of the five of them, but I can double-check on the, I'm not sure about the last one. But I can get that back to you and make sure that we know that you know exactly how many.
What are the possibilities of the these federal funds not coming cuz of the all that craziness that's going up in?
Hmm. Well, if. Right, yeah. So if they are distributed to you, you will you will receive them. Um so that that is good news.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
So you're saying once they are distributed, uh we're fully funded at that point, or can they still pull some of the money?
If it's a yearly program that is continuing on, they can shut the program down. But if it's funds that are allocated to a specific year and you've already used those funds, they can't retroactively pull funds that you've already been awarded and used. And we'll be working with um of course, city administration to make sure that you all are fully aware of um what's going on, so we can make wise decisions with that to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Of course.
But just uh for the city clerks, if we could be on the record that the mayor did log on at six P M. Um I know he was trying to speak real quick. Mayor, you on?
Yes, I am.
You're good. So um I don't know if you'd like Mayor Pro Tim Gómez to still continue running the meeting, unless you feel you can, you wanna run the meeting?
Um I'm still um, she can continue with the meeting and I'll be uh listening and taking action too.
Very well. We can move back to seven, eight, two.
Okay, so we're strong activity reports, special presentations, and committee reports. We'll go back to activity, um community development. Uh contract city planner, four creeks.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, mayor, members of the council, Josh McDonald here. Uh the name on my Zoom may say Elsie McDonald. That is my beautiful wife, who's allowing me to use her computer instead. And I'm very grateful to her for that. I ha- I'll be brief this evening. I I know your council has uh a lot to discuss. Generally, the uh your planning staff uh has daily, multiple times daily activities, which is really good. Uh we're continuing to process business licenses, um home occupation permits, uh building permits in general, changes of address. Uh lots of zoning inquiries, lots of uh home occupation inquiries have been coming through lately. Uh we also are uh discussing with a number of potential conditional use permit applicants. Uh for example, a potential solar farm, uh they're interested, as well as a hydrogen refueling station. Uh we have a meeting uh with uh Antony and Angie and uh that potential applicant on Tuesday of next week. And uh from, that pretty much represents the current planning uh update. We, I don't have a an update for you on the potential annexation. I realize uh staff is very busy right now, so we remain ready to uh to work on that when the time is right. Uh unfortunately, as I as I mentioned last month, we we continue to have to work on code enforcement issues. It's just a a a fact of life in in municipal government, and we are assisting Angie and code enforcement staff with preparing um notices of violation and identifying what those violations are and working with them to to get those completed. Uh finally, the uh from a long-range planning perspective, the housing element was a new draft of the housing element was sent up to State H C D about three weeks ago now. Uh your planning staff did review and comment on that document. Indications from uh the county and the consultant are that this might be the last round of review of the housing element. If that's the case, uh staff will be taking a housing element to your planning commission and ultimately to your city council for review and consideration, hopefully before the end of the year. Uh the last thing I'll leave you with is state laws changed again with regard to accessory dwelling units. And so it's on my plate. I need to uh take a look at the municipal code to make sure that the um accessory dwelling unit standards that are existing in the adopted zoning ordinance are consistent with state law, the the changes in state law. If they're not, I'll um have to take a uh amendment to the zoning ordinance to your to the planning commission and to the council for consideration in the near future as well. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
If anyone in the uh council have any questions? Uh no questions, McD- Mr. McDonough?
Thank you very much.
Question? No? Thank you.
Good job. Hold on to seven B now.
I think. So um presentations and reports, Avonel Landfield quarterly report.
Lee, the George, I saw George log on, but not, I know Teresa's ready to go.
Hi, good evening. My name is Teresa. Um I am the office manager for Avonel Landfield. I'm stepping in for George. He's at a manager's meeting tonight. Um I believe you have a copy of the quarterly, the second quarterly report. I'm not too sure if he got that to you guys or not. Um, okay, so I will um verify the tons um that we had for Q two, which was April first through June thirtieth. Um our inbound tons for the second quarter were uh two hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and two point oh four tons. Those were inbound tons. Also, we had um we had seventeen point seven-three tons of metal going out. We recycled two hundred and forty mattresses uh for the second quarter. And also, we were able to capture forty-nine point three-three tons of tires in the working phase, and um I believe that pretty much concludes the report is what he asked me to report to you guys. Is there, I'm not sure if you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
I did have questions, but I think uh they're better answered by George.
Okay.
So I'll just, I'll just call him up.
Okay, he'll be back on Monday, but I do know he is answering phone calls and emails.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
We can continue. I would suggest the council, we continue the rest of the meeting and then go close at the end. We can go public hearing, old business and new business. That way, we don't hold a public hostage.
Thank you.
Okay, so we go to uh public hearings. Joint hearings of the City of Avonel. There's none. There's none. Old business, we moved um.
Item D.
Item D to new business.
Um item, let me move over to that. Um item, let me move over to that. There's not too much to say. Um as mentioned in the resolution. The September eleventh meeting for ordinance twenty twenty. It was stated that the item would be brought back to council at this following meeting. To have it waived for the second reading regarding the fire ordinance. So I'm pulling that up right now. The last meeting, it was introduced and we had the first reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three. Adds chapter twelve to title four of the Avonel Municipal Code, establishing the Avonel Fire Department and Power Protection Regulations. And as it was in the resolution, it's being brought back on the cons- it was on the consent calendar for the second reading adoption. After waiving the second reading, the ordinance goes into effect in thirty days or October twenty-fifth. So the recommendation by staff is by motion to waive the second reading of ordinance twenty-five dash oh three. That allows it to go into effect. Staff will publish a summary, we did five days before and we'll publish another summary fifteen days after in that.
Do I make a motion to wait the second reading? And approve the uh resolution as presented?
You still have to uh discuss it. They haven't asked for any. Questions or discussion?
Um is there a council discussion? I have no, oh wow.
And this was spoken about extensively at the last.
I understand.
Hmm, what is your question?
Not a question, it's comments that I got about this. You know. At the end of the last meeting, I specifically asked the city manager. If that letter was that. One-year contract was going to go. To the county the next morning. And it specifically said, yes. And we all agreed, all of us, agreed on the one year. To go back to the to the to the board of supervisors the following morning. Okay? We still don't got a contract. And how do we want to approve this without a contract? Again, we there's no rush for this to be approved today. Next more meeting. I'd like to postpone this to January for our next first meeting in January until we can get.
January?
Yes, January until we get the contract. Not only that. Until we get a a full our 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 budgets finalized. Because we don't even got that. On top of that, we don't even got, I asked for a that six hundred and seven thousand dollars. There's no. There's nothing that says. What is going to be spent on? It says right here, yeah, but it's just that's vague. Anytime I've seen, anytime this kind of kind of money gets approved. There's listings of what this money is going to be spent for. I've sat on this council for five years. I've sat on the school board for twelve years. And anytime this kind of money is presented to any kind of board to approve. To be spent, there is atomized of what that money is going to go for.
Exactly, you've you've been on this board for four, five years. Why didn't you bring this?
I'm talking.
Term. Why didn't you bring it up?
Let's let's get back on order, please.
On your last term, why wasn't it brought up in the last, your last term?
Okay, the reason I'm bringing it up, the reason I'm bringing it up, the reason I'm bringing it up is because the contract is not.
You made.
Doesn't matter if I voted or not.
You gave input, everything.
Doesn't matter.
People need to know that you gave your input, you voted.
Doesn't matter if I voted or not.
Okay.
Is the fact that it's back here, it's back here to approve the second reading, which I'm going to request for it to be read again if it does pass.
We need to have order, please.
Okay. I don't know what kind of boards you ever sat on, but I've sat on two of different ones for over many years. And the amount of money that is being spent is like giving him a blank check to buy whatever he wants and then tell us what he bought. Do you do that on your on your finances? I don't think so. So one, I was lied to that that thing wouldn't even went over to the county. When we all of us agreed on the one year.
We did.
Okay. And what happened?
The county's playing game with the, they're saying they're playing, we're playing games. We submitted exactly the contract that they submitted.
You're about to lose the fire department. You're about to lose the fire department. There's no hurry on this. There is no rush, there is no rush in doing this. There is no rush. That's why I'm saying first more, first meeting at the first of the year, this one needs to be brought back up. There's no rush. Why is there a rush? Why? There's no rush. No, and then we don't even got a a a plan of how it's going to work.
We've been, we.
It doesn't, hey, I'm talking.
Been talking about it. We need the ordinance to get things.
Embarrassing, I'm embarrassed.
Things running.
I I'm embarrassed to see you here and go through this again since May.
Exactly.
With. If you could sit there in good conscience and say this is good, I'm not saying we don't, we don't need our own fire department. We could do it. But we're about to lose a fire, a a a whole firehouse. Come November first. They'll take their trucks and we'll get. And hope to God that your house doesn't catch on fire. Or one of your children has a medical emergency.
You have kids too, you have grandchildren.
Exactly, and that's why I'm bringing it up. This, there's no rush for this. Like I said, it's like giving the city manager a blank check for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
There's a motion on the table, Mayor Preciado motion to approve second reading of of the ordinance. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Reynosa.
No.
Councilman Verdugo.
No.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gomes.
Yes.
Mayor Preciado.
I vote yes.
There's a three vote, it passed.
This is just an ordinance. It's just to get it running. And we're not going to open it in six months and a year, maybe not even two or three years. It's just to get. It run up and running, so we can speak to the people. We can't just give statistics anymore. We need to give them facts.
You, no. There's no, there's no public time, sorry. Okay, Dalila, it's okay. You can. There's no public time, Dalila.
I don't have any vote. I don't have any power.
Don't have any power, but you could, you could tell them what to do. You're the lawyer, you're the city lawyer. And you are all supposed to have.
Hey, please have order. Okay, Dalila, you said you were going to walk yourself home.
Yeah, I am going to.
Thank you and do so.
Thank you.
We'll review it. The council did approve for him to attend.
It doesn't matter if they approved it.
I'm not going to argue with you.
Get the lawyer out of there. Get the lawyer out of there too.
We'll look it up.
So item. We can move on to item ten, which was. Item. E from the consent calendar.
Um. Where? Oh, five V. Okay. The new business uh item E. Um, how how do we handle that one?
So we can um. Presents it briefly if um. Every city clerk likes to maybe go over the first of the staff report.
Yeah, so this is to consider transition from summary minutes to action minutes. Um this was a report. Originally prepared back in May. Um just haven't been able to bring it here. But after networking minute meetings with other city clerks, we do. We did learn that other surrounding cities do action minutes. And we're recommending them because they're more efficient. They reduce the risk of errors. While still keeping us compliant with the Brown Act. Brown Act does not require cities to summarize or transcribe public comments in the minutes. Um also with this, like our meetings are already live streamed and archived online, soon to be on YouTube as well. Um and again, this is not, just to clarify, it's not complete action minutes, they're modified action minutes. So we'll still have notable and significant comments. On the staff report, we do have what they would still include. So brief topic, how does you provide the context for each agenda? And documentation again of any important comment, public or council. Um comments and urgent community concerns. I think that's still necessary. It adds, you know, local value, so it's not complete uh action minutes.
Any, any comments from the council?
Okay. Because I was the one that pulled it, I got comments.
Okay.
Just like somebody stated earlier. You know, uh hmm. There's an ongoing on thing about this. Fire department stuff right now. And people need to know everything that goes on in these meetings. Every single word, every single mo- every single vote that gets are done. You know, they they they, we they throw out that word con- uh transparency. Over and over and over. Why are we trying to hide here by doing this? Right now, there's a big controversy about this fire. And by us, by us going to these minutes to. Minimize the minutes some summary. To uh this one catch-all thing. It's not, it's not fair to to the public right now. You, we, they need to know every single thing that's been said here and been voted on, word for word. And that's why I pulled.
If I can add, we currently don't do verbatim minutes. They are um paraphrased dialogue of what was said in the comments. Um and yeah, again, with significant comments like fire. I know it's important that would still be included in these with these modified action minutes because it is of significance.
It's not being amplified, so just also add on to that as well. Um because I did. Reason we waited on doing this was ensuring that we were able to post these things on YouTube, the um. Videos, the recordings, given that we already are streaming on Facebook, so more people are watching it. Most jurisdictions don't even stream their meetings on Facebook. We are on Zoom. There are many jurisdictions such as the one closest to us, the school district, that doesn't even stream or post. Any audios of their me- meetings, so we're going already above and beyond. Most people who have comments or have want to review, do go on the Facebook and. Or they'll look at our Zoom meetings as they're participating right now. So the idea there is something that we I asked to be included, is that we put a link to the actual recordings. There is any question about what was actually said or the context or. How it was stated, then you would have the recording for that. That's why we do stress ensuring that anyone who makes a comment speaks into the mics. Just like we are. Unfortunately, it's not amplified in this room. But we do have everything as much as we can being recorded. And the idea is we will be posting these on YouTube since Facebook, you may be required to have an account. YouTube doesn't really require you have an account. So that's what we'll be doing um moving forward. So we felt that now was the time to present this item to council, one to limit any errors because. As much as we can try to be as verbatim, there still may be um. Issues about how it's it's written or not written or maybe an item, so if we have the actual audio and video recording, that's more faithful to whatever. The constituents may be saying or whatever is being stated by the council. We felt that that's more reliable than typing everything up, spending staff time on just writing out these minutes. Given that sometimes meetings do run pretty late. Case in point, last meeting till one eighteen A M. And that would add to more paper, more pages and more. You know, just to have a verbatim of the entire meeting. And I'll end it with this, is that other cities do this as well, as stated in the staff reports, TAF, City of TAF, Kalanga. And I don't know, Moses, any other jurisdictions that you probably represent, I don't believe they go, they do a full verbatim of the minutes.
No, uh the full uh verbatim is usually done during, um some of them will do it for um. Uh sequoia uh public hearings and they'll actually have a court reporter. Uh but aside from something like that, um it's usually um kind of a mix between the action actually taken, which is the minimum required by the Brown Act. Uh and then some additional information that might be useful, but um the videos I've never, I mean. That's pretty extensive. I think it's uh. It's pretty, there are a few, but they're bigger jurisdictions like uh county governments that do that.
Yeah, the only thing that maybe as technology continues advancing is we've dabbled with maybe including the transcripts of what's recorded. But given that A I is not as sophisticated yet, it does miss certain sections or miss. Spells things or whatnot or misattributes who's actually speaking, so we're not at that point yet.
But why now? I mean, knowing that we had this controversy with this fire contract right now. I just, that just puts to the public. Like I said, transparency, it doesn't show the public, it it shows the public that we're trying to hide something. By doing this right now.
Trying to be more efficient.
We could, we could wait till later until this fire contract and all this other stuff gets settled, then we could probably bring it back. But for now, to be more transparent. I think we need to get rid of this until this fire contract and everything's over with. So I motioned to. To delete it or to get rid of it.
We could bring it back at a later date, and I agree with that. But for now, I think we should um. Put it aside.
So there's a motion on the table with um deleting or removing the item out of the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second that one.
Councilman Reynosa.
Yes.
Councilman Verdugo.
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Gomes.
Um. So we're putting it as.
No, you're removing it from the agenda.
But you can always re-agendaize it.
Oh, yeah, okay, so yes, my vote is yes to move, to remove it and bring it back later.
Mayor Preciado.
No.
Three pass. Will remove the item.
Okay, correspondence and announcements and closing comments. Uh from the council.
No comments at this time. And no correspondence.
No closing comments or correspondence at this time.
Uh this. Looks to be a fast meeting, just to let everyone know, we will be having a pistachio days committee meeting next Tuesday at the Avonel Museum. For those who want to participate and be a part of the planning committee, we will be having um. Discussions about the schedule of events and looking for volunteers as well. So anyone who's looking to participate, Pistachio Festival will be October seventeenth, which is Friday, and October eighteenth as well. Inviting everyone out to the Avonel Museum at five forty-five next Tuesday.
That's for planning.
Planning and participating, yes. We definitely need volunteers to help it, help make it a successful event.
Any comments from the council?
No comment. I just want to thank the volunteers from uh the 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 distribution that was helped by the Rotarians. Those pouring, I, as you guys all know.
That's right.
And and we, they still made it happen, so I just, I'm very grateful to have people there dedicated to helping our community. Thank you.
That was a rotary, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I have no comments.
We can move on then to close session. We can move on then to closed session.
Go back to number four.
Want to go for a recess?
Recession.
Okay, so I motion to, um.
You can just announce a recess, um, that we're going to be in closed session.
Okay, we're going to go into recess and then into a closed session. And we adjourn at six thirty-seven.
Is one of you in Noah State, if you don't mind? Sorry, now you're going to sit down. Now, but I'll be online in there.
I have kids.
Okay, um we're back in session, there was nothing to report.
No, no vote.
No vote.
So now, um in terms of adjournment, um we can adjourn now. Uh in light of the comments from the um council today that they were gonna be uh pulling out on uh potentially on October thirty first and their fire services when um uh you know, the board may want to decide to have a special meeting to discuss that, if so, uh under the Brown Act you can discuss even though it's not on the agenda, you can discuss a suitable time for that.
Can we do it now?
Yes.
We were thinking of having a special meeting before their meeting or maybe after their meeting. But I don't know, what do you think?
It needs to be done today, so they have they have information again tomorrow morning.
Well, in order to have a special meeting, um we have to post twenty four hours before, so and I don't know that staff can post anything right now. And the earliest you'd be able to how to start your meeting tomorrow would be after they're absolutely twenty four hours after you can get agendas posted online and visiting, so I, you know, in terms of practicality um you know.
Monday.
Sometimes next week, sometimes next week, you could you could do it Monday.
Needs to be done Monday before the board supervisor meeting.
Or it could be done after to see what they what their action is.
Uh this is Tony, I know I had to step out, um I know what, uh to recap, I don't recall all the options that they're supposedly looking at, but I know that's one of their options, they said they had three other options as well. Um I did send a counterproposal. It was sent yesterday after the discussions that were had between the mayor and supervisor valley under what was initially discussed. So that has been sent, I've not received any response, obviously because the board supervisors not met. Um although they may have the the item to consider on Tuesday, it doesn't necessarily mean that they'll vote on it that day since they're looking at four options apparently. Uh we'll see that what tomorrow, I believe is when they said they would post their agenda on that. I would recommend probably waiting to see what they actually vote on. Keeping in mind, reminding the council that city has previously accepted their contracts and then they changed it last minute again on the dais, so.
Would they next, if any, would you be available, would you be available for a special meeting?
Um it can be that Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday, any of those days.
I feel I feel we should meet uh either Monday or Tuesday to regroup and see if the options that we have and then after they have their meeting on Tuesday, we can have another special meeting just to go over what was decided that we we're on top of whatever discussion is happening. And and I also uh would like to report that I'm participating at the meeting and nobody is here with me. So still in the public place, thank you.
So on.
It's the pleasure, any.
Monday is good for me. Sooner the better.
So um you want your city manager there who can provide information. Uh I I would recommend you recommend you guys have a closed session, there's been a threat to public services that's an item under the Brown Act that has its own closed session provision. Um and so uh could meet under that provision as well. Uh and have it open if you wanted to, or you can just do close um to decide what what you need to see, what actions you need to take to protect public services.
You can have a close and then report after that.
Yeah. Which is so um if you watch city manager, it sounds like Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah.
You'll be able to have an update by then on.
Can he do it on Monday? Can you do it on Monday?
I will not be back until Monday at like ten P M. Uh into the States, I'll be, I was gonna I'm gonna be at work first thing Tuesday morning. Uh I already scheduled previously scheduled a trip and have tomorrow and Monday off. I was obviously still be keeping tabs on the situation and try to gather more information. Uh but again, we can be proactive, we've been as proactive as possible regarding these negotiations and despite what supervisor valley indicated during his public comments, that was not a true representation, the mayor was not there to rebut some of those claims, because that is not the way I've understood that those conversations went. And also the conversation I've had with the C A O. So this is the action and the reporting out of one supervisor, not necessarily the entire board of supervisors yet.
Terms of posting a meeting, uh logistically speaking, uh how soon can a meeting be posted? I mean, because that's obviously a concern too, so.
That's twenty four hours, um okay.
Right.
Again, we can post for Monday to have it on Tuesday, early Tuesday, whatever, or Tuesday after three or two after their board supervisor meeting to know what the result was.
Motion by any council member for a particular day.
When does their agenda come out? On Friday?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Friday? And they're posting four options?
Apparently so.
All right, well, if there's no motion, then I guess we're adjourned.
Right.
Um.
Good. Well, we we gotta do something, because but uh now that I think about it, I think it needs to be open.
That's fair. I I think we do need time to see what sorry to interrupt. Yeah, sorry, interrupting, uh I do believe and would caution the council on being too reactionary and at least waiting to see what they're actually going to propose, because our previous conversations when the fire chief had just started three days in was that he needed six months or a year to pull out. Now, apparently they can pull out within a month. So these again are just tactics by the county to try to bully the city into a position, um which we've already indicated and agreed upon the terms of payments and all the other items regarding reporting, which the they had whittled back down. Now, the only thing is regarding the term of the agreement and being able to pull out uh which the city's never signed the contract for eighteen months, much less one year. It's always been six months, and I know that's been the sticking point for them. And they're aware that the city is working towards having its own fire department, that it's not a secret and at least the conversations I've had that nobody on that board or their administration is against the city having a fire department, so at this point, I'm not sure why they feel so compelled to pull out so quickly, especially after sending payment for over half the contract.
So yeah, we can't get into it right now, because it's not on the so but I mean, if you if you guys can't decide right now, that's fine, you you can decide after.
I can, though I make the motion to have the meeting, special meeting on Tuesday, probably four P M. So we can discuss uh the outcome of their meeting. So we can discuss the outcome of their meeting and options that we have.
Second, anyone?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by mayor, second by council member Verdugo.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Brazil.
He is.
Here at C D O.
Yes.
Then do it here.
Right here. Well.
We'll do it here.
You guys can decide whatever's posted on the agenda.
We'll do it here.
Can we, can Anthony submit the contract for the year? And make sure they have it on Friday and see, and so they can have it for Tuesday.
I'd like to have a copy of what was sent to them yesterday or today.
Yeah, he said, he said it was for one year, right?
That's what we, that's what we agreed on last time.
Anthony, you submitted it for one year?
Yes, with provisions that if and when the city had its own fire department, that it could then go. There would be a reopening and having a 60 days notice after the first year. And if it was to happen sooner, then there would not be any, there would be notice, but they would still get their full payment for the first year. And after which if there was a fire department, then it'd be a 60 day notice. So I can share that. It's not a problem.
Nine, third, September 30th, a special meeting, 4:00 PM. And that, that's it.
And we need, we need that contract to have be in their hands for their meeting. So if they oppose that one year, then we know where we stand. So at four o'clock, we'll decide then.
All righty. So I think that's ready my turn. We're adjourned, right?
Seven, 4:39.
So we had turned at 7:39.
Big travels.
Thank y'all.
Be careful.
Good evening.